Moving on to real call if we can rename just here Commissioner Reynolds. Lieutenant Francis. Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Garcia. Here Commissioner gone, here Commissioner James.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyne here, Commissioner Mustafa. Commissioners. Suva. Okay, so we have seven out of eleven commissioners present today. Commissioner Reynolds, Commissioner Francis, Commissioner Bevett, Commissioner Mustafa being absent. Even on the secretary's report, we get a secretary's.
Uh, so the meeting agenda and packet was posted on Friday, March eighth, two thousand.
Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes, can I please get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twelfth, two thousand.
Motion to approve the minutes of February twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Can I get a second to approve the meeting minutes of February twelfth, twenty twenty four? Second, if we can go approve the minutes of February twelfth, twenty twenty four. And then if we can all go on the table and approval starting with Commissioner Lyne. Aye.
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 So the vote passes with a motion of seven to zero to four. Moving on to introductions. Well, not an impact. And then moving on to public comment on items on the agenda, do you have any public comments? Okay, moving on to new business. In old business, we're going to review the FY twenty twenty four new commission work plan with the staff report, please.
Yes, uh, so if you turn to your packets, in terms of these staff reports, which looks like this. This is our monthly update on the work plan. Uh, as you know, you've already completed some of the items, having senior digital assistants day, providing support for special events. Uh, but the big one, of course, is the opportunity fair, which is happening, must be in two weeks, on Saturday, March twenty third. Um, the commission has done a lot since the last regular meeting, they held a special meeting and they had separate committee meetings. And I was gonna turn it back to you and ask if the committees wanted to kind of summarize what they went over. And then review one of the last steps that need to be done, what what are before we we actually have event, because between now and then we will not be meeting, so uh, we may be corresponding from texts into emails, but we won't have any formal meetings because it's a week from Saturday, so we should have almost everything ready to go at this point, but let's go through and find out what's still missing down.
Okay, so starting off with marketing, I don't think Melanie or Sayeeda here, so I can say for that, so we printed up flyers, the flyer that we saw the green one, the green ones are a way for dish approval to get them like posted up at schools. And then we also mentioned just taking it to blue classrooms and clubs to advertise it. And then we also talked about promotional interviews, so we have interviewing some of the vendors, we made a list of what would be interested. And then we would just make like a montage of the interviews and post it on Instagram. And also we do an Instagram countdown, we just have the ten days one need, so that should be going up soon, and then we're going to one, five, four, three, two, and one. And yeah, that's basically it, so not to vendor outreach.
Oh, I just wanted to add, um, so staff submitted a flyer to Peach Dark, um, and we're just waiting to hear back for approval, which I think we should be fine, and that should probably go out to every household, Gilroy High, Christopher High, and GPS. Uh, by the way.
Okay, that's good. Okay, not to vendor outreach, does anybody want to take that?
Oh, John, um, and everyone else, actually, I brought a bunch of flyers, so um, if you want to take some to Starbucks, can I do that?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, and anywhere else where you guys.
Okay.
Do you want to say anything for vendor outreach?
Uh, sure, we updated our spreadsheet, we discussed changes to our confirmation letter to vendors.
About I have the spreadsheet up here, so it has been updated, which is great, thank you for those of you who've done it, um. I was wondering, uh, if we could just kind of maybe go through the ones that haven't been confirmed yet and find out where what the status is. So. Uh, Sharon, do we just go down a list?
Yeah. So.
Oh.
Maybe I'm here.
Oh, on all of all with Gilroy Key.
Okay.
Uh, oh, oops, actually, this is. Okay, Digital Nest was, oh, Aiden, um, okay, we'll find out what's going on. Oh, no. It's all people over there. Okay, I can um, text them tomorrow and find out what's going on.
Uh, Harvard University, yes.
Harvard, okay, good. Um, Internet Club?
Funders.
Okay, I'll follow up with Sayeed. Oh, we got the Terabats?
Well, I just sent it, they didn't respond or.
I can talk to them.
All right, yeah. And then, um, Y2, yes.
Y2.
Same thing for you, but I've sent no response.
No response to it, okay, I can follow up with that, let me see.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I will, um. Actually, some of you. I mean, you guys see Maya tomorrow, maybe you can just have her either email or text me. Uh, and update, I'm just saying who else. Um, Melanie's, I need, go to. What's, uh, okay. All right, I'll reach out to them, but if you guys can reach out to Maya, just ask her.
Also, Aiden and Sayeed, they're on their way.
Oh, okay, great.
This, this will be a good thing.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, so we're getting there, we're getting there, hopefully we don't have any no-shows or flanks, uh. Usually one or two sometimes don't show up, but if the majority, hopefully the overwhelming majority.
Is there any um, plan or discussion to kind of do a comfort, like a quick call, quick text day or two before the event, just a reminder, we're expecting you. We're excited, we're excited to see you on Saturday, we're expecting you to be there, please, you know, reminder, please be here by this time.
We can do that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, um, that's great, yeah, okay, so what I would do is email everyone who has a contact, just a a quick, brief message that you could, you could send, you can, you can customize it however you want. But um, let's see, the event is on Saturday, maybe we'll send it uh, on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, I'll make a note. So that would be the twentieth. Okay, so three twenty, and you know, they don't have to respond, it's just a final, it's it's basically just a reminder. Hopefully none of them say, oh, I can't make it.
Even also about the details, does anybody? So, we updated the passport, so we have instructions for like the raffle and decided upon to get cards for the raffle. And then, um, it, you know, because I started to go to that and we made the lineup for like, for all the booths we need. And we also like determined like the little materials that would be like for the event.
The passport is on the screen.
Wow.
I added the map.
Oh, cool.
It should be, this is on Google Docs, the.
This is just a, I think it's just a, this is just a PDF, but it's on Google Docs?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look at it tomorrow and then, so the plan is, is on one side, you're gonna have the passport, on the other side, this is for each participant, it'll be a map, so. I'll just show you, um, so they'll have the map on the other side, and then what Alfred did was on the bottom of the map, each number will show which uh, organization it is. So like, for example, let's just say number twelve is the Gilwood, it'll say twelve. So people know like, you know, where they, where they may want to go, if they have a particular interest or something like that, nice. Okay, so.
I want to ask, I think we need to order tickets and stamps or stickers.
Oh, yes, we have like a hundred thousand raffle tickets, because we use them for other activities, so, so that's taken care of, um. And then stamps, same thing.
Okay.
So, um, and we have some pretty unique stamps, so people can, you know, try to copy it with. Um. And what else was there? Um, we'll provide pens, right, because people will need to sign off on it. Um. Do you want to talk about the selfies? With the vendors?
Alright, so the idea is once you get your ten stamps on your passport, you're gonna go around and then the ones that you visited, you take three selfies with the person who's running that booth. And then you go to the media table and then tag yourself in the raffle, they'll show them your paper with your ten stamps, and then you'll show them the selfies in your camera, and then they'll give you a raffle ticket.
I was also thinking for the tickets, we can have an easier way of doing it, just because at the um, the attack it was a really confusing way of doing it, I thought it like.
I'm trying to remember, what did they, how did they?
Because they, they gave you, okay, yeah, some of them, like, one of, one person gave you two. You'd write your name on one and then you'd give that to them, so they could instead say the name. And then you would be able to prove that that's yours. Uh, and then a bunch of other people just randomly handed off one ticket. It was like really confusing, no one really knew what was happening, lots of people want the raffle.
So what do you suggest?
I, I think there's two ways of doing it, it's either number one, you give them one ticket and you keep a notebook here, so they can keep a ticket. And put the other one in the box or whatever, or we just give them one ticket, where she writes her name and then they turn it in.
Okay, well, which, which one do you?
I think we should just uh, give them the one ticket and then we instantly put the other ticket back in. Because I feel like if we give them both or whatever, right, have them write their name on it. It's gonna be really easy for them to forget, and then, you know, have like ten people lining up, wait, I forgot my last one.
Okay, so it sounds like so there's the two tickets, right, there's one that says keep this ticket, right?
Yeah, that one has like the names and all the info you should write on it, and then the other one is just like, it has the ID.
Okay, what info do you, should they write on it?
Maybe just their name.
Their name?
Name and some number, yes, in case they be before the raffle, yeah.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Let me keep along with that one?
Yeah, okay.
So they keep one, and then they submit the one with the name of the cell phone. Right, and then we ran away, okay. And the vendors again for the gift cards was history coffee, Togans, Heely. Camino Coffee, Yoga Pino, and Busu. Um. What else?
I think we were talking about assigning chips for.
Yes, so if you look at the table here. I'm sorry, the map. Okay. Uh, you're talking about the registration area.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, uh, so how many, so the registration areas where people were intending the event, right? To check in? Okay, so how do you, what do you, what do you want to do with that?
I think it happens to people at a time.
Two people?
Yeah, we rotate in pens.
Okay. Um, and then how often do you guys want to rotate? Like every hour, every thirty minutes?
An hour.
I think an hour is good.
Does he not say that? Three hours?
Yes.
We need some positions to be there to be. Because maybe we want, would want to have someone have at least each type of position.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, you guys want to figure out, what are the positions?
Okay, so we need some people at registration, then Aiden and I will be at the M C. And we also were talking about having at least one person at each like entrance or exit, just to escort people, like if they come in the wrong way, to put them in registration, and then we were also talking about just having floaters around in general, just to help like make the event more smooth.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was checking.
So we're making a registration, entrance, exit, or floater.
Alright.
I was listening, yeah.
M C, what was it?
Registration, entrance, exit, floater.
Wouldn't that mean that YouTube went out, uh, so we can I'll talk to you guys if you guys want to, but I think it'll be easier for this stay there, just to be less complicated. Especially if we have a script, because we're, you know, the M C's script. I don't think anyone else wants to.
Yeah, you thought you might have an interest there, I think that'd be a good idea. So what about the registration, the entrance, exit, and the floaters, okay, I think those positions could really, to get a variety to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, well. If we want to have everyone do all of the other stations, there's eleven of you, two of you. Yeah, so you want to maybe in groups of threes?
We can do that.
Would that work? That's why everyone gets a chance to try everything.
Yeah. So three at registration. And then three at each entrance and exit, and then.
Well, there's only gonna be, you have to kind of pick three places where you have, have folks kind of watching, where people are walking up and exiting. You're mostly concerned about people walking up and getting them to the registration table. Not so much about exits, I'm saying.
Yeah, but uh, yes, and but as you can see, there's different ways to uh, enter, so those three people are definitely gonna be moving around, so.
Can I have to be watching where people park and kind of where they're walking up or where they could walk in?
So if the, I think it's in the letter, if the event starts at eleven thirty, I think we ask the vendors to arrive at. Say, remember?
In the hour five?
I want to say ten or ten thirty.
Yeah, ten thirty, I think it's one and one.
Okay, um, and then I see balloons, what's, uh.
I think we said we would have arch, it's like the couple, it's like child to.
Okay, well, we definitely need help with the arch, so.
I think, I mean, I come through, um, the C S, C F S, I at a school, and you said to make it boom.
Like, maybe.
Like make the arch boom, and then they can like have it said here, uh, or probably have it like. So I want to ask you how vague you want with it, but.
Um, I'm not sure. We do actually have a balloon arch, um.
Oh, we used it for rubber carpet.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, you guys can, you guys can do it, you know, we'll, we'll provide you with the balloons and stuff that you can you don't have to blow, we have a machine, you just have to try it. Any color schemes, green and gold? Pretty gold? Um, what else? What else do you need for this event? Look at the map, let's, what maybe you're gonna, you're gonna need.
Is there a plan for the tables and chairs being set up? I was waiting, I'm sorry.
Alright, so you're gonna, you're gonna help us set up. So, and here's the thing, unlike oil red carpet, which was at Wheeler, it can be set up in advance, you know, this you can't, because it's obviously it's outside as they open, so we have to set up that morning. So if the, the vendor you're getting there is early, is say ten thirty, um, then you know, everything has to be pretty much set up by the time they get there, and there's a lot of tables, chairs, I repeat. Need to be moved, uh, it's uh, and then positioned according to the map, so, um. That's gonna take a lot of, a lot of hands, so everyone's gonna need to be here, and what time do you think we should arrive?
Here, this is eight, but.
Oh, does it say eight?
I think nine, probably, nine and thirty.
Why don't we split the difference, why don't we say eight thirty? Okay, better to always have more time and relax than be under the gun and rush and make mistakes. Do something regrettable, so, um, so eight thirty, Saturday, March twenty third. And, and wear comfortable clothes, obviously you're gonna wear your your. Um, and, and all, and obviously wear comfortable shoes, because you're gonna be moving around a lot. Um, hopefully it's a nice day, that's, that's the big thing, if it does rain, you do have a backup plan. Uh, but it would be better if we can just do it there, do it uh, on the bus.
Best to do closed toe shoes, since you're doing tables and chairs, so no foot flops, no sandals.
Um, what else, what else?
I think we talked about this already, but we have speakers and mics.
Yes, yes, um, we're gonna work on getting that ready, so everything will be at Wheeler, ready to be rolled out, and then it's just a matter of setting things up, hooking it up. Whatever it may be, uh, but I think between all of you and and staff, we should be, we should be in good hands. Um, and inevitably, something is going to go wrong, okay, so I am just telling you.
I don't think anything's gonna go wrong.
Oh, no. I have done these before, and it's the first one, by the way, see, we've never done this before, so something, we're either gonna forget something, or something's not gonna work, whatever it is, so we just have to be prepared to the pivot. Um. Anything else that comes to mind? Oh, Sayeed, uh, do you have an update on any of your vendors?
Who's going?
Right, let's see. Um, we got Six Street Studios, did they?
Oh, no, I haven't. I haven't emailed them yet.
Okay, okay. And then what about the National Honor Society?
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Yes. And let me see, yeah. Who's supposed to? Okay, yeah, if you can follow up with Six Street, and if they don't respond, let me know, I know them, so. But let's see if they, they follow up. Alright. What else? This is it, this is the final meeting. Like I said, I may text you, I'll probably send some emails out, but this is the time, if you have any questions, if you have any other ideas, things that we're gonna discuss.
I mean, to be one of them, I know we want to do like four, you know, five raffles of twenty one gift cards, do you want to decide the times for that?
Yeah, that's a great idea. So if the event starts at eleven thirty. People slowly trickle in, when do you want to have the first raffle?
Twelve, twelve thirty?
Twelve, twelve thirty?
Like, yeah, maybe like me in the middle, like twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I mean, we say there was five, okay, so you could do it maybe every half hour? Is that right? Yeah, actually that works. Yeah, if you need to space it out, you see that there's a lot, a lot of people coming in, or a lot of people about to leave, maybe you wanna, you know, move it up a little bit.
Okay.
Something like that.
And besides raffles, would there be anything else the M Cs would need to say, otherwise it doesn't get anything? Any announcements?
I don't know, what do you, what do you think?
You could, so the floaters that are walking around, if they see a booth that doesn't have like, you know, people coming, like nobody there, they can have the DJs make an announcement. Just to boost attendance everywhere.
That's a great idea, yeah, um. Yeah, there'll be some that'll be more popular than others, but um, let's try to, let's try to, yeah, let's try to be applicable in terms of getting the ones that maybe don't attract as many.
Okay, so that's another job for the floaters too, to
Yes.
Tell the M Cs what you, place some need to announce.
That one will commit, uh, Leah's asking about the food trucks, so.
Um, yeah, they want to commit, huh?
Unless. Because you can't, who can't grant you? Okay, what else? Um. Oh. I thought about this actually at the beginning. So typically, when someone, and I only know this because I've been on the other side, but when you go to these uh, career fairs, job fairs, usually, as a thank you, the host gives the vendors like a little, a little gift or something, you know? So. Yeah, any ideas?
We have this, that's a hard open.
Because they're coming, you know, they're, they're gonna spend three hours there, and they definitely are getting something out of it. Still, it's a nice token, and if you want to do this event again, it might help bring them back.
I reached out to her multiple times and she wouldn't reply back, so I don't know what happened there, but I believe we drafted a thank you card a long time ago to send to the vendors after, so I don't know what happened with that.
Yeah, okay, uh, by just giving them like a thank you card?
Yeah, just a card, and we talked about something else we would give them, but it's slipping my mind now.
Well, that could be nice, I mean, if you, you get like a pack of thank you cards, and then everyone writes you know, a little message, thank you for participating, and if it comes from all of you and has, you know, that, that's, that's nice, you might do something they may want a lot to. Other ideas? Okay. Well, if you think of anything, let me know, but we can start with just giving them a card.
Sorry, we might be able to get flowers again, because I think Maya's, Maya's mom, like wrote the title, but she worked with flowers. Worked, yeah, more better. But I think she mentioned it once, like a while back, but I'll, I'll ask her, I'll see if she did it.
That would be nice, you know, a card, flowers. They'll definitely come back next year.
And we would have to buy the cards too?
Um, yeah, but they're, they're real, they're, they're inexpensive, so.
Since there's not gonna be food trucks, since we couldn't get them to confirm, is there gonna be any other kinds of little snacks or? Since there's not gonna be food trucks, since we couldn't get them to confirm, is there gonna be any other kinds of little snacks, or waters, or anything that. Or which that is hospitality wise that are gonna be given out?
Uh, well, that's a good question, uh, I kinda, I kinda mixed the snacks. For participants, but we could get something maybe from vendors, you know, cause they, again, they are there for three hours, um.
I mean, that could be part of the thank you, is we could make like a little snack bag for them and put the card with it.
What do you think?
Would we give them the, the snack bag afterwards, or?
No, you would, it would be effort, you would like do it all at the beginning.
Yeah, it's one of those things where you could actually. Yeah, like once the event starts, we just go around, check on them, and then we hand them over.
Yeah, and that'd be nice, cause the flowers also be for decoration.
Um, okay, so like, does anyone have an idea for like a little snack, again, we can give them a little bottle of water.
What if we bought pizzas without pizza?
I.
Kinda awkward to eat pizza while you're trying to, you know, talk to people, talking to your people.
It's also, you know, it's gonna be outside, it's just, you know. What else you got?
I was thinking like, just like one of those little. Small bags that has the handles on it, you know, just like a gift bag, and then put a couple bottles of water in it. Uh, maybe a granola bar, bag of chips, a couple, you know, like an apple, a cutie orange, you know, just like a little. Snack bag that wouldn't take too much to put those together that long. One for each table.
Yeah.
Pretty low cost, I think, yeah.
Okay.
To get most things that cost low.
Okay, um. What else, what else, let's go back to marketing real quick, because we can have twenty five vendors, they're all there, you're there, place looks great. And very few people show up, so, um. I know we've got the countdown video, we've got a flyer going through Peach Jar. Uh, it's been in the City E newsletter, we're gonna send it through recreation. But what else can you do, cause you're the ones, you're the target audience. Um, we've got some flyers, I can make more, but what else will get people to this event?
Uh, this was a little bit about the last topic, and I know we kind of put down this idea, but I was thinking, uh. A while ago, I had like a career fair, a little bit similar. And one of the main things that got the, which is bits to interact with the vendors and such. Is that they might have some sort of item. That they would give away if they like, were like, oh, you seem very enthusiastic on that situation, was like asking questions about the job. Like, that's a really good question, or you, I think you'd be great with this, then maybe like, some of them were like. Uh, related to the job, like a cook, uh, gave them a recipe. Maybe we could do some sort of Gilroy bag or something with the name on it, or maybe even snacks, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good idea, um, but what I'm saying is this, I'm saying, how do you just get the basic word out about the event? So that's effective, once they're there, we have to get them there, right? So how, and we've talked about this, but I just wanna make sure, are there any other, other, other ideas, other ways to get. Your, your peers, your friends, your, your fellow classmates? Cause that's, that's who you're targeting, right, isn't that why you wanna do this?
Uh, I was discussing this with my dad. And he mentioned something, I don't really understand it that much, but it's called next door. It's like a neighbor thing, uh, he briefly explained it, I think you guys know it more than I did. But he was saying, like, if all of the commissioners discussed with, if their families or their friends and got them to post it. It might be able to cover more people.
That's a great idea, is that, is, are you familiar with next door? No?
I think our parents are.
Um, well, if they, all of you have a digital flyer, so you could ask your parents if they can post it, or you could post it on their behalf. Uh, that would definitely help, you know? Especially if you live in a neighborhood where there's a lot of people your age. So, good idea, um, anything else? Jamie, when you. Do this countdown, is there a way to share it with the other commissioners?
Yeah, so on Instagram, you can just repost it on your story, so you can have more music, you got the best.
Okay, so is that something that the commission, right, cause I mean, that's the easiest, cheapest. Uh, quickest way to get the word out, right? Alright.
Uh, I just, right before the meeting, I was, I was with Emily, but after the last. Committee meeting, I think, I went there to grab up the flyers, and so I went today to follow up, but I don't know if they. Lost it or took it home or something, but I asked them, they said they'd call me back, uh, and let me know if they.
Oh, okay. And this is the, uh, the net flyer?
Yeah, that one.
Okay. Let me, uh, I, I know the library, maybe ask her. Oh, did you ever hear from. Regina Ness?
I sent out the email two days ago, and I'm still waiting for response.
Alright, anything you want to work? Talking about marketing, or talking about the day of the event? Right.
Um, I just wanted to ask, I know Melanie said that she would have like a playlist issues for other events, did she ever send you anything, or?
Wait, say that one more time?
Melanie mentioned that she had a playlist that she would send, did she ever follow up, or?
No, no, um. Yeah, I know what you mean.
Okay.
Uh, what's, what's that thing called, um? It's not Pandora, it's Spotify, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah. Uh, do you see her?
Yeah.
You wanna ask her?
Yeah.
Okay. She actually emailed me on a couple other things, like the countdown, and. Oh, did you hear? Okay, um. Like I said, this is it, this is the final meeting, so, and you have spent. A good portion of this school year, talking about this event, um. Spending time, you know. On your own, outside the meeting on this event, so this is it, this is the final, final meeting. Are you ready? Yeah? Okay, well, if things do pop up, let, let me know, they have a vendor contact, so you said they, they can't do it, um. For those of you who are waiting, update the, the confirmation sheet, for those of you who haven't heard back from your vendors, let me know, and then. For some of them, I can follow up, cause I know that. Um, and Vince will be back, he'll be back next week, so he'll, he'll definitely be there, um. I don't know, can't think of anything else. Alright. Signing. Alright.
Moving on to agenda items for our next meeting.
I have, so at the end of. This school year, the chair. Uh, does an annual presentation to city council. Alright, so last year, for those of you who went, it was, uh, Lavender, and so this year, it'll be Jamie, um. And if I recall, we spent the meeting kinda talking about what. You, what would be discussed, you know, so we'll put together a slideshow, and you guys can figure out what, what topics you wanna talk about, obviously. By then, we'll have the opportunity fair done with, so you can talk about how that went, and where that's going, and. And other things that you've done this year.
Oh, I have another question.
Yeah.
Does the city by any chance own a camera? I was thinking, one of us could be like a photographer for the event, like while we're floating around.
Oh, um. You know, we used to, but of course now everyone has, uses their cell phones, um.
I can do it, because my school owns a bunch of cameras, so I'm sure he'll let me take one.
Oh, yeah, so, that would be great, so you're gonna be our, our document checker.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Does that have like a video component too?
Um, I don't think so, but I can always do that on my phone, but, um, the cameras will get really.
Okay, nice, that would be great. You know how to use it?
Yeah.
Uh, but are there any other items that you wanna go over for the next meeting?
Well, you should probably talk about like the bike to wherever day, cause that's getting something up in May.
Yes.
And we're gonna do anything with, with that, Udis Creek cleanup is also in May. Day of the Child, is that still happening?
No, they're just doing it now.
Okay.
Yeah, but Udis Creek Bike to Wherever Day, um, I will fill you in on what those are for next month. Both are in May.
Moving on to staff, in case you have comments, we have a review of Yakata Conference.
Yes, so, alright, um. What I was gonna do is, I've got some pictures that I thought the attendings could, you know, talk about, um. Okay. Alright, uh, so once it start. Start with, this was the first picture taken. Oh. Alfred, come on.
Very sure, uh, so the meeting, so we got there, they had a bagel bar for us to eat from, and then.
Wait, how did you get to the conference?
Oh, so, I don't rent, uh, he, we dropped a bus from the city, and it was like. An hour drive there, and we did, we spent a little time just talking to each other, and then we got the community center there, it's so, so nice.
I'm pretty sure.
And it's like, it's like brand new, it's so nice. Then, we got there, ate breakfast for a little bit, and then they had a ton of city workers from that county, so. So I don't remember the, like, exactly what I think, maybe. Yeah, one of, I think. Remember the mayor, that's the mayor of Burlingame.
Yes.
And then, everyone else, there's another, I think they got the left's mayor, Stan Mateu?
Uh, no, San Carlos.
San Carlos?
Yeah.
He's retiring too, but they just, they were answering a ton of questions about, like, city policy and public service, and how we can. Do a better job getting involved with our community, and, yeah, I. I think what they had to say was really, really touching, like genuine, they, they had a lot to share, and it was really nice to hear from them. And then, when they were done, we did kind of leadership, like exercises, they had like, a little break, or. Uh, if someone else would like to talk about that, they could.
They had multiple workshops, and three sessions. The first, and after the first and second, there was, uh, lunch, and then you got to explore the area.
Wait, what was, do you remember the first one that you went to?
Uh, I went to a Generations Day, uh, workshop, it was discussing Portlandian's experience with that. And then, each of the city's count, uh, commissioners got to discuss different ideas for that.
Okay, hold on. Um. Cause you were there too, right?
Yeah, so they were basically talking about like, how to like bridge the gap between like the youth and like the elders, so we like came up with this idea, like. Oh, yeah, there we are, but he came up with this idea to have like, wasn't like, we called it like elders on deck or something?
Oh, don't say elders.
No, elders. Sorry. Seniors on deck, and we like, we moved this idea to like. Have a day dedicated to seniors, and like in the morning, we would like do exercising with them. Middle of the day, we'd have like games and activities, and at the end of the night, we would host like. Something with like live music where they can like dance, and then like the food would be like buffet, buffet style, like. Issues of like cuisine from like all different cultures, like they were like on a yelp, kinda good.
Fortunately, I took a video, um. You can hear it.
Thank you for that. We're making a senior night on deck, and we have like the crew team, so if we had seniors at our, each group would be like a different sport. And we would also open the gate, and we'd have classes, dress up, and we'd be there, that's all. Okay, have some activity, in the morning, you start off with a morning exercise, you offer yoga classes, or Reba. And then throughout the day, we have gaming night, playing, playing sports, gambling, playing, or whatever it is like. That night, we're playing a dance night where we have live music, and they can dress up and have fun. So these are important parts of all food, so of course you have to have seafood on them, and cocktails without alcohol. Where it's very in buffet or cooking, so that was one of the problems, really got a lot of different experience with food.
It went over very well. Alright, good job. Then, this is where we get to know each game. We play. Okay, now what?
I can kinda talk about that, so this was. I think right after lunch, they gave us, I think, an hour of like free time to just like. Enjoy like the surrounding like park, and like get to know some other commissioners, so we were playing a game where you like. It's like kinda like one holding those and trying to get them to stay. It just sounds so fun. That looks so bad.
Okay, so what's all this about? Cause I wasn't at this session.
Okay, so, the last session that we attended was, uh, a self defense. Part, so they were teaching us like moves to do, like, uh, how to protect yourself in my worst case scenario, uh, and this is the demonstration.
Who's this, who's this person?
Uh, she was a commissioner from, I think it was Burlingame, because they were, they were hosting the.
Alright, here's, video number two.
Hey, nice, are you calling after you, what you gotta do? Oh, okay, call back.
Oh, what's going on here?
You thought it was by surprise upstairs, and that's your picture.
Okay, Saye, why don't you go, so where are you?
Uh, we're on the stairs. Of the new renovated. Community center in Burlingame, it was really nice, it was a zero energy.
Zero zap?
Yeah, zero energy. It's all about the, the breathing, the breathing, but. Oh, we're in a cool like breathing. Oh, they had us doing, uh, different breathing exercises for de-stress, it was nice, it was funny.
And, oh, and who are these people?
Uh, Morgan Hill, Youth Commission.
Yes, yeah, so we sat next to our neighbors to the north, and, um. They want to get together with the Gilroy Youth Commission, it. You know, having a collaborative event, so. That would be fun. Alright, and, that's it. Okay, anyway, so, good job to, uh, commissioners for participating. Is there anything else that you guys wanna talk about at the event that wasn't mentioned yet? I would say it was very impressive, there were cities, I, I, I mean, there were at least maybe twenty five, thirty different cities that were represented. Uh, Gilroy being among one of them, and also who drove, one of the cities that drove, uh, drove the purpose. Uh Gilroy being among one of them, and also who drove, one of the cities that drove, drove, uh drove the purpose. Uh so people were impressed. You guys have a good time?
Okay, that was my.
So unfortunately, they only do this every two years, so um maybe we'll be moving on, but um. Uh, it is a lot of fun, we get these opportunities, try to, try to take advantage of them wherever you are, because um. There's, there's, there's so many takeaways, so how do you, how do you recommend it?
And generally, I'm not a much gatherer, so.
Hey, and also to add flyers, if uh you guys wanna take any. I was like. Your phone is on the way, dating a priest.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't feel bad, they're like, oh, that's fine, that happens. I had it in my.